All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order, the June second. City Council meeting for the city of Mount Angel, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councillor Eager?
Here.
Councillor Astorga? Are you there councillor Astorga?
Here.
All right, thank you. Councillor Domhue is absent. Councillor Ott?
Here.
Councillor Hooper?
Here.
Councillor Mulet?
Here.
Youth Advisory Councillor Morales Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Powell?
Here.
Let's get the good part done first. I like it better when it's not in an envelope. So. Go ahead and stand up, here comes the embarrassing part. This is Maru, councillor. Well, yeah. Thank you for being part of what we do here and taking even this slightest bit of interest and civics in your town. So congratulations, that is your scholarship for being the advisory council. Uh, let's move on to appearance of interested citizens. Your turn, Zim.
That's my turn.
And you too, Austin, where do I stand? Right up here.
Hello, I'm Sam, or whoever doesn't know who I am. Uh, I'm just here to talk about sidewalks down by my house on West Trip Street. With the new development, it has so much more traffic going around. But all those sidewalks coming up because the new sidewalk ends there and then they have to cross the street. Which would probably be nice to have like a crosswalk. There now because we just extended town, but everybody treats that as the edge still. So everybody comes in flying. And now it's a bunch of foot traffic because it created a new loop around town. Bunch of people going, but now over there also there's no cut-ins. For wheelchair accessible on the sidewalks going up the old side of the street where I live on West Church. You, if nobody's have, if somebody has kids in a stroller, they're on the sidewalk. Or they're not on the sidewalk, they're on the street. And they're just walking all the way up until they can get back on the sidewalk because there's nothing there. Uh, two, uh, people drive out of town and drive into town super fast. And wasn't that big a deal before. But now we got so many more people there. From the development and then all the people from town go in that direction because it's somewhere new to walk. And it just creates, I don't know, an unease. Because there's a lot more people there still flying cars. And the fact that everybody coming up from the new development has to cross the street and there's no signage that people are gonna be crossing. And I almost feel like it should be like a caution. Kids at play are like, people are gonna cross here because there's a lot more foot traffic than there is once before, so. Uh, I think that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Traeger.
Oh, thank you.
Right, let's move on to the consent agenda. We. Any corrections or notes for the council minutes that were distributed? Right, uh, council payable report, uh, councillor Astorga, any, any comments?
Could we go back and take a vote on that?
Oh, sorry, I was taking it all as one piece, my bad. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, I have a motion by councillor Hooper, seconded by councillor Mulet, roll call please. Councillor Mulet? Councillor Eager?
Hi.
Councillor Hooper? Councillor Astorga?
Hi.
Councillor Domhue is absent. Councillor Ott?
Hi.
Mayor Powell?
Hi.
Apologies Colby, I'm just handling those together. Uh, moving on to the council payable report, councillor Astorga, any questions on the council payable report?
I did, on council page fifteen, packet fifteen, page fifteen. Uh. Is the IGA for the baseball nail dragging, who is doing that and why do we need an IGA?
So we did an IGA between the city and the school district. Uh, because we were actually borrowing a piece of their equipment. And there's liability attached to us using their equipment. And should we return the equipment back to the school district, not in the same condition. Uh, that it was, uh, that we needed an IGA that listed out all the wherefores and whos and. Uh, the liability side of the, uh, use of the equipment.
So is that basically a deposit? So that was basically a deposit?
No, it was the attorney's fee.
It was the attorney's fee.
How long is the IGA good for?
I don't think there's an expiration date on it.
Perfect, even better.
But I did, I did order our own piece of equipment since it.
Any other questions councillor Astorga?
I do have one more on packet page eighteen. Uh, San Diego Police Equipment Company, um, didn't we just buy ammo last month as well?
So, we are able to buy what we can buy and, um. Yes, we did buy some ammo, but it wasn't our complete order because we ordered ammo from a lot of different places.
I questioned this one last year and it's, because there's. There was the rifle ammunition where you could get it, that handgun ammunition where it was on sale and.
Yes, and in fact, uh, George Lopez is, uh. Very prestigious and finding us the cheapest for what we absolutely need to have.
Any other questions councillor Astorga?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Black, any questions? Councillor Hooper?
None.
Councillor Ott?
No.
Council President Eater?
What is a tossy box?
Uh, tossy box is for our SCADA system. So we then connect our cell phones and SCADA system, so we can, basically we can. Uh, put the app on our phone so we can check it.
And what are you monitoring on the phone?
Uh, we have water and wastewater.
Oh.
That's what I want.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that I have none. Unfinished business. Council President Eater, would you like to introduce your item?
Uh, we're gonna talk about the. Wastewater sludge removal. And I'll guess I'll explain why I want it brought up as I felt like. We didn't talk about it, we, we, I don't have enough of the nuts and bolts. Of why all this stuff has to be hauled to coffee, uh, costs that direction versus. Costs going the other direction or the process, how this all works. I just felt we took the easy way is just pay this bill and dispose of it and. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Sure, well, for a little introduction, I'm a fire mill engineer that works for Civil West. I tend to work on the white wastewater projects that come through. So looking at the sludge accumulation in lagoon was first thing I've looked at for Mount Angel. Little background, you have a lagoon system, you've known about sludge accumulation for about. Six years, twenty nineteen was the first sludge sampling that I saw on record. And since then, there was a sampling done in twenty twenty-three. Where sludge has accumulated, um, past the design point of storage in the lagoons. And so what that means is if you were to drain the lagoons down minimum operating level, you would see amount of sludge. The reason, or you have really two options to deal with sludge in a lagoon, you could. Landfill it or take it to an external treatment facility. Generally, it's a landfill or even land apply. The issue with land applying sludge from the primary lagoon, which is. Those scope of what we looked at here.
And that's the lagoon we're talking about now?
That's the lagoon we're talking about here. Is it's unstableized, so all of the. Dirty stuff you think about when you think of solids and wastewater, it's just being deposited right in there. Second, the wastewater system for Mount Angel. Uh, does not do any conventional screening of any plastics or debris that you would typically. Mechanically wastewater treatment plant. So what that means is that all of the consumable plastics that get into. You know, a toilet and get flushed, even though they're not supposed to. Go to the headworks where they're macerated, ground into, you know, small plastic particles. And they settle down into the bottom of the lagoon. If I'm a farmer, I wouldn't want those plastics on my field. Um, and this has kind of become a, you know, hot issue in the last couple of years. I was just at the city of Eugene Biosolids Facility. Um, they have a pretty advanced treatment system where they screen out all of the plastics and particles like that. Uh, however, they have contracts for six. Uh, farms where they would land apply the biosolids. And the last couple of years, five of those canceled on them because they're concerned about PFAS and PFOA. Plastic byproducts that are, uh, that accumulated sewage sludge. And so I think that you would have a hard time finding a farmer that would agree to. Land application on their field. Um, however, we did identify quite a few parcels that may be suitable sites, um. I would recommend that you, you know, contact them. Or at least some of them to see if they would be interested in forming an agreement for land allocation. For the other lagoon cells such as we're giving them cell two and three. Where it's mostly secondary solids where all of the nasty stuff has been settled out. And then the future, whenever you dredge those lagoons, those that you would have a site available for it. But for this, uh, material, I don't think that it's environmentally conscious necessarily to land apply it. Uh, I think that it has to be taken to an external facility. Um, which really there's only one option that can take it all in one go, which is Coffin Butte. Um, there are a couple of facilities. Uh, you have herd farms over in Roseburg, which is a further trucking distance, it would be quite a bit more expensive. They wouldn't be able to take it all in one year, but they could take some of it over the course of many years. Um, but ultimately Coffin Butte will be the cheapest for just a. You know, convenient disposal site. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so do some of these lagoons, are, are they not screened or there's not a screening process to pull these plastics out?
Not here, we can currently know there's a macerator, it grinds the plastics.
Correct. So if it is land applied, everything goes on the property?
Yes.
And it has to be stabilized, like, like Ken said, it's, it's primary, you know, it's, it's not treated at all. And so in order to land apply, you'd also have to stabilize it, which means adding likely lime to it to, to get it to. Is not be a vector attractant, is that the?
Yeah, I mean typically, uh, land application of biosolids can be cheaper than a landfill. But in this case, because you'd have to do all the treatment to make it so that it's legal to land apply it. Some of that's been done through the treatment process. It ends up working about the same, you know, whatever we cost estimated the two. There's a couple of ways you could stabilize it, one is, um. You know, have run some giant tanks and let it sit for about a month. It's called anaerobic stabilization. Um, but most frequently it's dosed with lime, generally it makes a better product anyways for the, for the farms. Uh, but it doesn't do anything about the plastic pollution, which is what I'd be most concerned about. Can you also dip into, sorry? Okay, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we also talk briefly about, um. The process it takes to acquire, to basically acquire a DQ permit. For that landowner and the bio solid management plan that that farmer would then have to agree to in order for this to work. And how many years that is, et cetera, et cetera? Yeah, so the first step, uh, would be to, uh. Have a site authorization letter with the landowner, so basically that's the city's agreement with the landowner. That this amount of land, um, is agreed upon as a land application site for the city. That has to be signed by both parties and agreed to, um, but agreed to by DQ. That probably would take about a year to go through that process of negotiation unless. Someone in the council or someone in the city steps up and expediates it. But if we're starting from scratch and, you know, starting at a public outreach stage, I would guess it would take about a year. The next thing you have to do is like develop a biosolids management plan. And so that goes into more detail about how exactly the biosolids are removed from the lagoon. And estimate about how much gets removed from the lagoon. All of which we've already prepared, so that part would be pretty. Easy to do. Um, but also goes into how it would be treated. And results of sampling that would be required and the sampling for land application is quite intense, there's. Um, vector attraction testing, you know, proof that it's been stabilized in some way. Uh, there's metals concentrations that would have to be met. I don't think you would have an issue with that, there's no. Major industrial, uh, sources that would cause the metal concentrations that are of issue to be present. Um, and then, uh, pathogens, so they would test for all forms of. For how long? That would have to be done every time that, uh, sludge is. Uh, dredged from the lagoon and that would likely take, um, another year. Um, for the biosolids management plan to be written and then approved by DQ. Uh, I would say that there were a few times on a document like that is in the three to four month range. And like I said, most of that info, uh, once you have the site authorization letter and you have the estimates of sludge that we prepared. I think you could get that biosolids management plan out. Couple of months and then three or four months for review. So I would guess a year and a half. From maybe start right now to being able to actually land apply.
Do we actually have a year and a half before it has to be done?
Uh, I would say. It's already past the point where it needs to be done because it's, you have a mound in there that's over the design capacity.
Problem is, is the, is the mounting biosolids in there reduce the, the volume, the treatment volume of the, of the lagoons. And so you can't drop down as deep as what the design point is because there's, there's biosolids. And so if you have a, a, a period where you need all that treatment volume, it doesn't happen every year. Every twenty years maybe, um, but you wouldn't be able to do that at the current issue. So is it likely to be an issue next year? Probably not, but it's below the design point.
Is the farmer compensated in any way for land applying? Monetary?
That would have to be negotiated, but.
In your experience as events?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that, sorry, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that something you handle or we would have to involve our own attorneys?
You, I mean, for, for the negotiations, they have to have your own.
So, so your cost probably doesn't even include attorney costs for that.
So on the liability end of things. And maybe I'm wrong. But you take the Coffin Butte and as soon as the truck crosses the scales on the way out, liability is over, right? When does the city's liability truly end with land application? After the, after the sampling's done, I've heard rumors of, you know. There's like an eight-year statute of limitation on liability for land application with DQ, I've, I've, I've heard a lot of different things, but like. When does the city's liability end with land application? It's a really good question, um. Or does, if something comes up later? Well, provided you're following the approved. Site authorization letter and biosolids management plan and all the testing requirements. It is the same as whatever the truck leaves the scale. Um, but if they find out that, you know, the contractor that was hired to do the. Sampling and the transport, the land application didn't follow all the rules, then. It would be a liability, but I would say that the contract should be. Awarded to put that liability on the contractor that does the work rather than the city. So the time period of which the liability extends is about the same. The opportunities for somebody to screw up our liability is exponentially higher because so many more people are involved. And there's a lot more regulations involved with my application with, uh, landfilling, you know. There's RECA, which is just a standard test to make sure it's not radioactive or extremely toxic waste. There's no chance that it is. The, um, and then it has to pass a paint filter test, so it just has to be de-watered to a point where it's not liquid. There's not really much room for error. And so you would like belt squish it before we haul it off anyways, right? Yeah. I don't know the proper term, I call it belt, belt squishing it, but. So the city of Independence, um, has been doing this for the last couple of years, I believe they've been using a centrifuge system. Okay. That we, that would be something we leave to the contractors, means about this. Okay. You'll be a bit, uh, you know, there's an estimate of this many dry tons of solids would be removed from the lagoon. You're required to meet RECA and you're required to meet, uh, the paint filter test. Um, but how you do that as long as following all quick rules, regulations. That's your means and methods. Typically it would be a portable dewatering system like you said, a belt, filter press or centrifuge. Okay. And then, before I open it back up my last question, and don't laugh. Um, I take things to the simplest level. Is there any Band-Aids to buy anytime and, and in my brain, don't, don't judge me. It's, we rent Alan an excavator and he goes out there and he spreads it, you know, some. I know that sounds silly, but is there any intermediate? Things that we could do if we decided we wanted to buy the extra two and a half years that we would need to do this process? Yeah, actually the last sampling, uh, that was done in twenty twenty-three. Identified where that amount is, I think there's a couple of them, if I remember right. And it would be possible just to dredge and. Remove those mountains down to. One and a half feet, so that two and a half feet, and so you just do some targeted removal of those. Um. And then, you know, but it would still cost, you know, the. Six hundred, seven hundred dollars of dry ton to move as much as you need to get them down to your operating levels. Um, but it wouldn't be nearly the same cost as removing all of it.
Yeah, you're really concerned about the, the depth of it, since there are mountains, you could. Just remove the, the highest mountains and get your, your depth back.
And then, and then the rest of it's just more expensive down the road. The issue with the excavator is I don't believe there's a way to isolate that part of the lagoon. Okay.
And, so. If we were to, if we were to magically have a contract and be able to put them on somebody's land, like. We eat, we're, we're not legally allowed to take it with everything in it that's macerated and put it on somebody's field. We have to screen it or filter it to try to get the plastics and stuff out.
Well, at this time, um, no, there isn't any rules about the. PFAS issue that I talked about, um, although it is something that is being looked at by EPA. Um, and or DQ, um, so I wouldn't be surprised if there start, there. Are new rules and regulations in the next few years regarding those. Um, but.
About just the ground up plastics. I don't know of any rule that, that says that you can't land apply.
No, the only ones, uh, where I was in Washington, where they require it to be screened first, but in this case it's. Ground up, so it passed through a screen, so it would pass that test.
Um, but I mean, other municipalities are, I guess, I mean, like, really only. City with a lagoon that has a macerator and not a screen, I mean. Uh, other, other cities that are actively land applying. Everything is just, everything goes down the pipe.
You're one of the only ones that I know of that, that just has a macerator in front of the lagoon. Most, most cities have screens that, that I work with, unfamiliar with.
So it's screened at some point and they pull out the bigger solids before it goes into the pond?
Yeah, all the, you know, the larger, nerd plastics get removed before.
What, what kind of volume is gonna go to Coffin Butte? I want to process that, I mean, I'm looking at a ten thousand gallon tank or how many tanker loads are gonna go down there?
We use seventeen hundred yards.
Seventeen hundred yards.
Hundred and seventy trucks.
Hundred and seventy?
Well, dump trucks.
I'm talking, they're, they're not gonna take in dump trucks.
No, so.
It's gonna be in tankers, I'm assuming in closed tankers.
Depends on, uh, again, it'll go back to kind of means and methods of the contractor doing it, how.
Are you there?
They, they, they may want to do more, uh, dewatering so they can put it in a dump truck. They might find that it's cheaper that way. Um, but we would, we would propose to, to run the contract so that it's their decision on how they want to do that.
Councillor Astorga has something. Councillor Astorga?
So. I think what councillor Eater is saying, how many wet tons versus dry tons are we gonna haul? Because dry tons is when it's processed through a centrifuge, wet tons is when you just pull it out and suck it out with a.
I'm just trying to figure out how many trucks.
Tons instead of dry tons.
Your, 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 your tanker, your tanker truck is only gonna haul about ten thousand gallons. Your, uh. Your standard dump truck with a pump and trailer, you're gonna do about thirty-five tons. So there's a significant cost reduction. When you process to dry because you can haul more when it's dry. So it with the centrifuge, you're looking at about twenty-five percent dry cake. And that reduces your costs.
Yeah, thirty-five with the chiller weight.
Yes, um, you wouldn't say. You could, but you likely wouldn't take a dry cake to a land application site. The contractor would, in almost all cases, uh. Want to land apply it as a liquid, the problem with land applying cake is that you have to incorporate it, so it has to be tilled into the field. Um, meanwhile, the landfill would not accept liquid at all, they would require it to be a cake. It's kind of comparing, you know, apples to oranges here is one you take to the landfill, one is suitable for.
Two, seventeen thousand. Yards of, of dry, is that like dry, dry or is that like, uh, twenty-five percent like?
I believe that's said twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Seventeen thousand yards?
Seventeen thousand yards. I think it's seventeen.
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred?
Yeah.
So that's a hundred and seventy dump, just a dump truck. If they're pulling a trailer, it's. It's, uh. Eighty-five loads.
Yeah.
Eighty-five loads for, uh, three million dollars. I know you gotta get it out of the lagoon, there's a big cost there, but. I don't know what it costs to run it across the scales, but it can't be cheap. When they dump it. I know that.
I don't know if there's a, a different, I, I would imagine the, the tipping fee, the dump is, you're paying the same on that as pretty much.
Hauling garbage across.
Anything else going to the dump. You think often the dewatering, getting it out and dewatering.
It's slightly more expensive, there's a big charge you at composting fee, I think consider it compost. Um, but yes, the biggest cost is the. Employing a dredge, the electricity cost associated with the dredge. The dewatering equipment that they have to stage and set up and run. Uh, polymer that they have to add to be able to actually use the dewatering equipment.
And this is a guesstimate because we don't have a bid yet, do we?
It's based on. Pre-experience. Past experience. Yeah. City of Bonnet was a big.
Compared to projects just a couple of years ago.
And they had, um, you know, they did have a land application site, so they had bids that were on both sides of the coin. Land application and, um. Land building. And then landfill? Yeah, and then we did it, uh, for, out in Washington.
Yeah, Bader, Washington, they did a land application. Yeah, Bader, Washington, they did a land application. But it was a little bit different regulations for.
And then the city of Independence. Is the last couple of years been doing it.
So do you know what how the city of Silverton does theirs?
The city of Silverton, from what I understand, they have a pretty complex uh solids uh processing system. They do. Aerobic digestion along with uh dewatering uh consistently. So it's not really a comparable treatment plan.
They must be putting it on far fields.
So um I talked to Silverton and they recently uh. Got their uh was it a screw press? Yeah, they got their screw press hooked up. They were laying to find it, but now they're taking it to Coffin View. They still have a few acres locked up to be able to land.
Back to the model, you said they had cost estimates doing both landfill. What difference in the cost? They find.
Um honestly, the costs from the different contractors were overlapping. And they're kind of all over the place, um but generally land application was slightly cheaper.
Slight detox.
So the majority of the cost must be getting it into a truck. Is that a fair assumption? Cause if eighty five loads are going to Coffin Beer, that's not the majority of the cost, even though it's hundred miles round trip. Is that a fair assumption?
That's fair.
It's all gonna happen out of the biggest costs is out here, so you're not gonna get away from that.
Yeah, no matter where the truck goes, you're gonna have to mess with it. You're gonna have to touch it twice. You're gonna have to get it into a truck and out of the pond, right? And then you're doing one of two things to it, but that's probably seventy percent of it.
Yeah.
I wanna ask one question before I forget. And this can be a total wag, cause I'm putting you on the spot. What does it take to make sure we're not in this position again? To to install the whatever screen setup we need to make sure that we have the. We're not in the same situation with microplast, uh maybe not microplastics, but shredded plastics in the future.
It would be a. Pretty standard rupture fit, uh headworks, you probably make a new headworks adjacent to it.
Throw out a big fat round number.
Million dollars.
Well, what's that kinda game?
I was a lot more.
I have a question for Ray. Could you go out and and honestly try to negotiate with the farmer and say? We'll bring all this great stuff to make you props go, it's got everything that went down the pipe in it.
It would probably have to go to like Silverton Hills. On on grassy because you cannot grow vegetables behind this sledge.
Well, I I know that, but I mean, it's not the sludge. The sludge can be processed. It's the stuff.
Right.
Keep putting in the dirt for the rest of.
And maybe some of these fields that can't be applied, if there's runoff, they're not gonna want it to run off into a going into a stream, I'm assuming there's, I mean, it's gonna get worked in.
If I could object here, um the cities that have the most successful land application programs generally own the land. That they're landing flying on, so they're not running into this political barrier. The agreement they have to work out.
I I guess I feel better knowing that the majority of cost is getting it into these trucks. If that's what you're telling me and not the dumping fee at Coffin View.
Yes.
We can, if 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 it would help, we can try and break down those costs. I think we we we've looked at that and have, well, I think we.
I mean, even if it's two grand a load, which is excessive to go down there and dump it, well, I don't know if that'd cover the dumping fee. It may or may not be multiply that by eighty five loads. You're you're not talking a lot about a lot of money to go down there.
If I could, maybe this. Here is my process month. The removal and dewatering cost was one point seven mil. Whereas the tipping fee, and that's based on Coffin Beer's compost and tipping fee. Was a very small.
Uh transports five hundred fifty thousand. Plus the tipping, so you're at six hundred thousand.
Yes.
Those about two grand a load.
And then.
And ask how long this process takes? We're talking a month?
Yeah, probably would take the the better part of a whole dry, dry season. You're dredging out the sludge, going through the process of of uh treating it, adding polymer, thickening it. And it's a.
Like three, three months, three months?
Five.
Five. So it starts in the spring and ends before winter sets in.
Ideally, yeah.
So ideally, by the end of the summer, we make it this uh a decision at least of the direction. So you guys can start working up basically scope of work, ITV, excuse me, invitation to bid. Get it through the attorneys, all other stuff, bid it out early twenty six. So we have a contractor in place with the equipment hitting the ground in May of twenty six, best case scenario.
I I think we probably wanna do it a little bit sooner than that, just cause the contractors who do this are pretty specialized and they're likely to. Have their their uh schedule set for longer in advance, so.
Could we eventually get a copy of what you just showed me?
Absolutely. And we did.
Okay, you think we did?
Okay, just instead of the uh.
The land application cost assessment is on page twelve and then the land filling cost estimate. I think we get thirteen.
Webster a month ago.
Mayor Bow, the the answer, I guess more your question earlier about what can we do to not get in this boat again. You're putting a a a screen on the on, you know, building your networks, putting a screen so you don't have it with plastic to the lagoon. Which is gonna help make it a better product, but you're still gonna have every. Every twenty years or something, you're still gonna have to deal with this.
Well, that was my question. So I'm gonna spend a million dollars to maintain the ability to potentially land apply, which is only gonna get harder and harder to do. So ultimately. Keep pumping and just do it more often, so we don't get into the position where we're actually hurting to do it. Okay.
There's also, you know, some that we we look at a little bit more because it's an ongoing cost if you start screening it. Um it start going into a dumpster that has to be regularly hauled.
Okay.
But everything that you haul doesn't go into the, it has to be hauled eventually. So you're you're. You're screening it, putting it in a dumpster, it gets taken away landfill, no big deal. We happen to dredge it out, there's there are costs at that.
Anything else?
Is this the same, is this the same one that you showed me? No.
Doesn't look like it, no.
Let me, oh, let me send the files.
I mean, this talks about land application and it doesn't talk about dumping fees. Oh, that's on page fifteen.
Yeah, it was on page twelve, the cost of the land application and then.
I should have it all.
Should be the cost estimate for. Not mine.
Any other questions for I go around the table? Council president Eater? Counselor Storgen, any more questions for distinguished guests?
Uh just one, uh are, did you guys build in about a fifteen, twenty percent variance in polymer costs?
We added a contingency in our budget. We budgeted, we put a contingency on the the whole figure you gave us.
Yeah, I I don't think we wrote down an actual polymer cost in our cost estimate. Um we we just took. Um estimates from previous cities who had done it and just apply a. Grow the economy factor to it.
And then we applied contingency on top of everything, so everything's got what fifteen or twenty percent terror now? Twenty percent on everything. Okay. Counselor Black?
Good.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Unless you wanna stick around for the water master plan adoption. That's the next on the agenda, but I think we're just adopting it.
I'll stick around.
Yeah, we might stick around for. Until I go around the table with questions. Moving on to Water Master Plan Resolution number one, six, zero, eight. This one is from you, Mr. Goldwood.
Uh Silver West has prepared a new water master plan and submitted it to the Oregon Health Authority. OHA has since approved the plan in the clinical applications. Uh Man Angel, city staff recommends adopting the water master plan. Uh resolution number sixteen O eight.
Any questions, councilors? Counselor Black? Counselor Otte? Counselor Over? Counselor Storgen? Council president Eater?
Is this the one that costs two hundred and twenty one thousand?
This one, no, this one wasn't that much.
That was the wastewater.
Wastewater? So what this one cost?
I don't have the number on the top of my head, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
You guys remember?
Seventy or eighty? Okay.
We'll we'll find out and be able to tell you, but we'll be able.
So the two twenty one was for the wastewater?
Okay, hearing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I will approve resolution number one, six, O eight, document city of.
A second.
I have a motion from councillor Black, seconded by councillor Otte. I have a roll call, please.
Counselor Otte?
Hi.
Counselor Black? Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Counselor Hofer?
Hi.
Counselor Astorga?
Hi.
Counselor Donnie, who is absent?
Hi.
Okay, now I'd like to thank our engineers for being here tonight.
I I have one more question for you guys. So how much land would this take? To uh to quickly land applied it?
That's a good question. Um honestly, it depends on how frequent you wanna land apply. If you wanna do it all in one go. Two hundred acres, off my head, um but you could do periodic. Dredgings and land applications over your period with just fifty acres, but I wouldn't recommend less than fifty acres.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And you'd have either ongoing rental or Moe and Demo of all the dewatering equipment and excavator every single time. So you'd have all the low boy fees and all the other stuff. Every year.
Mobilization.
Yeah.
The more than that.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a point of order question for Colby. Colby, do I go ahead and read the next item and then open the public hearing? Or do I need to open the public hearing and then read what the next item is?
The first option, read it, read it into the order and then go to the public.
Got it. All right, our next bit of new business is electing the state shared revenue, resolution one, six, zero, three. And this one is for Ms. Tara Wong, please.
Yeah, so we budget state shared revenue and requirement to receiving and spending those funds is to the hearing. We held one at the budget committee and now we have to hold one at the council.
All right, with that, the public hearing before the city council is not now open. The matter before the city council is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six budget. The public testimony portion is now open. Uh Colby, can you please read any written testimony received into the record?
I have not received any.
Thank you. Uh is there anybody from the public here who wishes to give any public testimony? Hearing none, I am going to close the public testimony and the city council will now deliberate and make a decision. Any questions from councillor? Counselor Storgen, any questions before we look at resolution sixteen O three?
Done.
All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Attachment attachment is wishing declaring the city's electionary state shared revenue for fiscal year.
Uh a motion from councillor Hofer, seconded by councillor Otte. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Donnie, who is absent? Counselor Otte? Counselor Black?
Hi.
Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Counselor Hofer?
Hi.
Counselor Astorga?
Hi.
Mayor Tal.
Hi. Moving on to item nine C. Do I need to read the title of the resolution?
No.
Uh item nine. B, C.
B.
Yes, nine B. Budget adoption in appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Um again, this one is for Tara.
Yeah, we presented the same budget to the committee that you are seeing tonight. Uh we didn't run across any situations that we have to ask for changes at this meeting. Um if there's anything that comes up, um we will just bring a supplemental budget, so the budget hasn't changed.
Any questions or requested changes to the budget prior to entertaining the motion? Councillor Black? Councillor Storgen, any comments or concerns?
Nope.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution sixteen O four, adopting the budget, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing. Add Valoreum taxes for the twenty twenty five, twenty six fiscal year in the city of Man Angel.
A second.
I have a motion by councillor president Eater and a second by councillor Storgen.
Counselor Astorga?
Hi.
Counselor Donnie, who is absent? Counselor Otte?
Hi.
Counselor Black?
Hi.
Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Counselor, hi, Mayor Tal.
Hi. One comment of note. Thank you city staff for their work on the budget and the fact that it was able to pass so smoothly.
Well.
Excellent work. All right, now item nine C, the P schedule update. For an increase in utility rates and ambulance license, uh tech.
So this is a standard uh P schedule I bring as it is impacted by the budget. We several years ago decided as you, excuse me, decided a couple of years ago to increase water rates. Based on the CPIU for the Seattle Tacoma Bellevue, which was two point seven percent. So I have applied that to the sewer and utility rates that would be effective July one. Um, and then again to the ambulance license, we increased that using the same CPIU. And then the last couple of other questions or changes we are requesting a staff is to increase the lean search fee. We as a city would like to move our being searched from being in-person letters, emails, phone calls to our city to an online system where we pull the information out of our financial software. We upload it to a website with that title companies and anybody else wanting to do a lead search can access twenty-four seven. They pay uh, or they're charged a fifteen dollar fee by the company that runs the software. Um, and then we want to maintain the same income we were generating, which was twenty-five dollars to the fifteen dollars and the twenty-five dollars together. So the forty dollars that you're seeing on the schedule. Uh, we have not implemented that software yet, so it kind of is dependent on if you want us to take a revenue loss and still proceed with that or to not move forward with it. Um, and then I think there was Oh, yes, I also wanted to increase the security deposits um due to the total amount of the flat rate fees for the utility bill being above our utility base uh, our utility deposit. It makes sense that the total deposit covers at least one month's base rates, so that if somebody leaves, we're not left with a whole bill. We can deduct the the deposit from the majority of the costs.
Thank you. Questions?
How often are we gonna be? How often are we gonna be raising the rates? Is it gonna be a yearly thing or is it gonna be every other year?
Uh, we've been doing it yearly, annually, yep. We have a max of five percent, so even if the CPIU was nine percent, we would only do five.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna get a little bit of flack for this, but is this just to keep up with the cost of material and uh, wages and all that?
Well, yes, and because the water master plan, all the projects that we want to do, that needs to fund our system.
And I think people, I think maybe we should probably put some of that in the newsletter to kind of answer the questions of the people. When we do this, um, to say, hey, we're gonna be you know, small income raises to pay for some of these projects coming up to better provide a better service for the city.
Okay. I think we have, we have, we are in the process of writing that uh, article, so I'll review it again.
So aside from the lean deposits, um, the things that you just mentioned, everything else is status quo.
Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'm need to approve the attached resolution, adopting the master fee schedule for services provided by the city of Mount Angel.
I have a motion by Counselor Otte, seconded by Counselor Black. We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Hofer? I Counselor Astorgen?
Hi.
Counselor Domi, who is absent? Counselor Otte?
Hi.
Counselor Black? Hi. Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Mayor Fow.
Hi.
Alright, moving on to nine D, uh, adjustment of, we're adjusting the wage scales of city employees. Um, Tara, you have a lot of them tonight.
Due for you. Uh, this is uh, to be more specific, this is for non-represented uh, employees, so that's library, city hall and administrative staff. Um, so because the union negotiation is currently pending, um, we want to go ahead and recognize our non-representative and go ahead and and follow the mid-max that we have been following of the CPI, which was two point seven in December of twenty twenty-four. So this will allow them to not be sitting and waiting for their union negotiations to close, and they'll just get their increase in July one.
You use the term mid-max, can you explain that to me?
Yes, um, they both unions have a minimum COLA and a maximum COLA amount. So the unions will never get less than a two percent COLA increase and no more than a four percent COLA increase. And so we try to keep it equitable among all of our employee groups, and so we also use that for the non-represented.
Or we're proving a two point seven?
Right now, yes, but once we complete negotiations with the police union and public works uh, working group, uh, we will likely come back so that uh, there's some parity in vote, so that we can reduce compression.
If necessary.
That's pretty good at that.
What if it's less?
Well, it's based on the
I heard between two and four. Is is this two point seven related to the two point seven that we just did for the fees?
Yes, it's all off of that same CPI.
But we won't go back and change the fees building?
Yeah. What?
No, the the, no, no, the two point seven is is what the CPIU is right now.
Right.
And so we're increasing, we just increased the the fee schedule based on the CPIU at this, at this particular moment. So under what what we're talking about right now is the unrepresented employees getting a two point seven percent raise based on the CPIU. But beyond that, once, once negotiations are completed with both unions, we may need to give some additional funds to those positions which may uh, see compression or that we're out of market on. So we may come back to you.
The union, that, right?
Well.
We're talking about union at that point, right?
I was talking about once the unions are done with their negotiations, that we will likely equal what negotiations were done with the unions with our unrepresented people. So with your directors and uh, finance department staff. So that there's not compression.
But we're not talking about police nor public works.
Not this particular moment, no.
So not everybody on this list?
Right.
You said.
Un-unrepresented people.
Everybody on that list is unrepresented.
Everyone on that list is unrepresented.
So when we say police union, that's just officers and administrators who are not listed there. And when we say public works unions, that's only utility lead wastewater treatment plant, utility two, utility one, and maintenance worker.
Just so I'm clear, you're working with the unions, union people. What I heard was you're working between the mid was somewhere between two and four percent.
So in their current contract that they have, that we're, we're working on the next contract, which theoretically will begin on July first, same as when this will begin. We generally for COLA have a kind of a sliding scale. So right now, the CPIU, the whatever I can.
Consumer price index, yeah.
Um, is two point seven percent. So generally, in those contracts, we will say wherever this happens to land, we will pay, we will give you a consumer price index raise of no less than two, but no greater than four.
Going in, going into it without knowing what the CPIU is.
That's, that's.
How do you know that it's close to two point seven? I guess my question is if we approve a two point seven for this, does that affect the union negotiations at all? Does that, do they go like, okay, now I know we get at least two point seven?
They, no, it's for December of twenty twenty-four. Everybody knows what the CPIU is, like way ahead, like this is not a surprise.
Yeah.
Okay. So, cause we have the mid-max, so everybody looks at December CPIU and everybody knows July one, what's gonna happen. Because the language in the contract says minimum and maximum four, so everybody knows July one, what they should get. Until the contract runs out, we renegotiate. They say, well, we want that sliding scale to move. We're saying we don't want it to move, but that's all what's being negotiated current. So.
And their new contract starts when?
It starts when we sign it. So we're hoping to get it done sooner than later. But um, otherwise it'll carry over until uh, you know, when we hit July first. If we haven't negotiated a contract and got that in front of council, uh, the contract that they're currently working underneath will continue to move on.
So this is the proposed, this is what we're looking at, what it's gonna go to, correct?
Yeah.
But we don't know what it was. We don't know what it was.
It's two point seven percent less than that.
Well, I'm not gonna do the math.
Yeah, I've never shown prior wage scales before. I just bring the CPIU new wages.
If we saw it, but.
You, you, you do see them every year in the budget, yeah.
I'm good. Any other questions? Alright, hearing none, I will entertain motions.
I move to approve resolution sixteen oh six, adjusting the wage scales of non-represented employees in the city of Mount Angel on July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Hofer, seconded by Counselor Otte. Have a roll call, please.
Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Counselor Hofer?
Hi.
Counselor Astorgen?
Hi.
Counselor Domi, who is absent? Counselor Otte?
Hi.
Counselor Black?
Hi.
Mayor Fow.
Hi.
Alright, moving on to nine E. Resolution sixteen oh seven, which I believe is authorization for a parks grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager Daniel.
Uh, the city was made aware of a grant program where the city could apply for a maximum of fifty thousand dollars for the purposes of updating our city's mark parks master plan. Uh, this grant was from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I have already completed the application for funding request. But uh, they do request that council, council formally approve my uh, request for permission uh, to apply for the grant as requested by the state of Oregon. Uh, I, under our terms and uh, the uh, charter and everything else, I don't need your permission generally to apply for a grant such as this. Uh, I've uh, not received your permission to get over a million dollars before, so. Uh, but the state of Oregon would like a piece of legislation that says that um, you approve of me asking the state for fifty thousand.
As a current employee of the state of Oregon, I am going to refrain from any comment on those uh, necessary steps that were being requested. Any questions?
It wasn't me, I mean, what are we doing? That was two thousand, what was it for, updating a plan?
Yeah, creating a new parks master plan.
You did?
Yeah, all of our best.
What's in the plan? What, what's in the plan?
Uh, what's in the?
Generally.
So generally, it's, it's uh, what we need to do with our parks, what we need to do for our parks. Uh, do we need new parks? Uh, where do we need new parks to go? Um, the types of things that will need to be in the parks. So it's a very comprehensive plan that looks at our parks and green spaces and identifies what we're gonna need for the future. But also how to maintain and take care of uh, what we've got today.
Yeah, and uh, so the fifty thousand is to go for paying someone to do?
Yeah.
Is it for a new person or a person in the office?
Oh, no. We don't have the capacity to do that.
I tracked that.
Yeah, so it'll be a consultant. We'll, we'll find a consultant to do that type of work.
From past experience, usually applying for future grants to actually accomplish what's in the plan, normally there, they put a age limit on your plan of ten years. And our current parks master plan is greater than ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it.
I was gonna say greater than twenty. I think it's greater than.
My, I don't know exactly. Might be, I have my last remaining copy in my office. Um, so.
Does it start with a nineteen?
It might.
It might.
Are we adding to the fifty thousand?
I don't know, cause I don't know how much it's gonna cost. Well, there will be a match of up to ten thousand.
There'd be a match of. There will be a match of.
We're required to give.
If we get the fifty.
Any other questions? Alright, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve. City Manager Mark Daniel for two applies our local revenue grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. The creation, the seven F J's, Park Master Plan.
Second. Uh, I have a motion by Counselor Otte and a second from Council President Eater. A roll call, please.
Counselor Black?
Hi.
Counselor Eater?
Hi.
Counselor Hofer?
Hi.
Counselor Astorgen?
Hi.
Counselor Domi, who is absent? Counselor Otte?
Hi.
Mayor Fow.
Hi, and thank you to staff for getting that application done. For their consideration of our state parks. City Managers report.
Okay, I'll be quick. Um, and I won't tell you where I got the parks management plan direction from my grant. So uh, I'm just gonna say once again, thanks to everybody who provided input in our strategic plan. Uh, I plan on bringing that to council next month. Uh, we have plenty on the agenda for tonight still, so um, that uh, will come before you next council meeting. Uh, today, I met with an ODOT uh, traffic engineer regarding the speed limits in Mount Angel. Uh, regret, or sorry, we met in regards to the speed limit on uh, North Main Street from Taylor uh, down uh, to Wilco Highway and Garfield at that intersection. Uh, ODOT wants to uh, change our speed limit in that area to twenty miles per hour. Um, I have maps actually with me that I want, I'd love to show them to you after council tonight. If you're interested, I'll have to show you the maps. Um, but just about like anything else that we have been able to determine. There's a lot of illegal things happening um, with speed zones in town. Um, striping across the road and a variety of other things which aren't quite lawful. In fact, he um, gave me some direction to talk to our cops about where to site and where not to site. Because of some of the postings that are actually speeds that are posted in town are not exactly lawful and on the books. So um, they anticipate uh, being able to make that change um maybe as early as fourth of July. Um, but I'm giving them a couple of months to make that change. Uh, so we'll, we'll likely see speed limits um, at least through the true business, legal business definition uh, portion of talent at twenty miles per hour. Um, he also.
Sorry.
But.
Um, is there an opportunity to encourage it all the way up to the Markham's?
Um, I tried.
Okay.
And um, the distance from Taylor up to the Markham's does not meet the uh, state definition of a business area. Even with um, burger time, um, there's not enough continuous business there to justify the twenty mile per hour speed zone, so that's why it ends at Taylor Street.
Okay.
But and when we're doing the ADA project, um, and we're working on the Markham's a little bit. Remember, I briefed you and told you we're not getting the high visibility flashes uh, on demand. But we will be getting flashing school zone in that area. So um, there will be flashing amber lights for the school zone uh, in the morning and then in the afternoon. Um, okay, um. I also finished a grant request um, for a trailer with uh, some um, vehicle barriers, vehicle barricades uh, that comes from Meridian Corporation. Um, these are, actually were just. Um, these are, actually were just featured on TV this weekend. Uh, if you watched anything on TV about any of the parades that are going on up in Portland. Uh, Meridian is a local contractor that supplies these vehicle barricades. That can be moved by almost anybody in this room. Um, there's actually levers involved and that type of thing, and all you do is kind of leverage them up and wheel them around. But when they're on the ground, they will absolutely eat a car or a truck. Pretty darn, pretty darn impressive. Uh, the really good thing about these uh, barriers is. They can, they're highly mobile um, by, by people, um, but when they're on the ground, yeah, you can't move them. And um. It makes it a lot easier if we need um, like to bring in fire EMS or somebody like that in the middle of one of our festivals or. Or anything where we happen to get uh, where we've got a street closed. It makes it a lot easier to move them out of the way and get people in and get people out, so. I'm hoping that this is the second time I've written a grant for this. I'm hoping maybe that we'll receive them this year. Um. If nothing else, it is uh, on the Spire Grant, so it's a statewide grant and. Of the agencies that have already received them and uh, the agencies that will receive them, even if we don't. We can request them and have them brought to Mount Angel to use them whenever we choose to. So, pretty cool deal.
Uh, so O- ODOT is successful in changing the speed limit in their business district on the highway to twenty miles an hour. Um. Can we find out any potential next steps because now our neighborhood streets will have a higher speed limit than our highway?
What's, it's the same thing that I briefed once before and then.
I went through and I can't remember if that was just the highway or if that's any of our community.
So ODOT, ODOT has jurisdiction over all of our streets. The only areas where they don't have clean jurisdiction is on county roads, so the Markham's are, are problematic in that respect. Uh, but any other city street ODOT has uh, jurisdiction over. Uh, they're the ones that we would go through um, in order to change any of our municipal speed limits on any of our municipal streets. Just like what the city of Portland did. In fact, that was the dude that I met with today that does all that.
And so that process doesn't change just because they changed?
It requires a engineering, uh, somebody have, he actually has to come out and physically do a survey of the street. And then they have to do an engineering report and there is a very laborious process to go through. Including all the money that they're gonna charge us in order to get that done. And then once they agree to change the speed, then uh, we're uh, up for the signs, so we have to put the signs up. And then once um, the speed has actually changed and the signs are up. After thirty days and they have to come back out and do another survey and another traffic uh, engineering uh, survey. To verify and then it has to be re-verified in certain intervals. So if we want to really entertain doing that, then you know, we can probably look at maybe doing one. Um. Cause I'm, I'm not sure exactly what all that's gonna cost. But I'm, like I said, I met the dude today that um, is the one who does all that. And I've got a pretty good relationship with him now, so um. We can at least, I, I did, I didn't go down that road with him, so we're gonna at least keep with that.
Any other questions? Can we move on to councillor reports? Alright, so councillor reports. Councillor Storgen, why don't you kick us off?
Yeah, what are we gonna do about the speed bumps or the, I should say, the sinkholes that are forming on the main dr- the, on Main Street? They, I, I, the other this morning, I saw a. Trucker trailer and the trailer looked like it was about to tip over. I'm just thinking. A farmer or somebody who's going through there with a, a top heavy load is just gonna hit that paw hole by uh, seventy-six. And just tip over.
So since the last council meeting, I, I've put in a phone call to ODOT and given the address. Um, on that stretch there from the coffee shop uh, heading north up to the gas station. Um, and I have a phone number for dispatch there. Um. I have not heard back and I have not uh, seen ODOT out there at all. Um, I can, I can put in another phone call.
Okay, and also where is it in these rules that we gotta do a traffic survey? Can't we just? Uh, put the twenty mile an hour signs up and not have to do any of the traffic engineering?
No, it's state law.
Yeah, we, we went down this path. The last two years. I think we. In one of our old packets, there's an entire.
I created, I created a whole packet on what it takes. And referenced the ORS.
Yeah, yeah, I ju-. I remember, I think uh, when was it? It was uh, Pete brought it or somebody brought it up way back when. Um, but, so it's, it's, it's gonna take basically all of that just to do a five mile an hour adjustment.
Yes, sir, you are correct. And I re-verified that today.
Anything else?
No, no.
Councillor Hoth? Councillor Bullet? Councillor Hopeur? Councillor Don? Councillor President Eater?
Since you asked, I got three items. Uh, what did the Everball Park improvements cost and what paid for it?
Um, the money that we've used to pay for the Everball Park uh, improvements have come from the Community Prosperity Grant. That we received from Marion County. And I think we're somewhere probably around fifty-two thousand dollars or so right now. And we've got a little bit more money to spend there, but we're getting very close to being done. And then um, we are using the same grant funds to work on the Akazibo.
Okay, thank you. Um, are we getting close to dust control?
Yes, I got a phone call earlier today about that. Um. Typically, I put it down in July and then another application in August. Um. I'm trying to get it as close to the beginning of fiscal year as possible, uh, because we've already spent our money for the current yard.
Hey. Cause it is dusty out there. And then um. This was brought to my attention to the mayor and I'm gonna pose a question to everybody, but does everybody know what a serial meeting is? Serial meeting? Serial meeting? So, so I'm gonna.
Councillor Hopeur and I do.
So I'm gonna read it briefly and I wanna know if I was in violation. Uh, of a serial meeting. So this was talking uh, individually about the sledge removal. Alright. So a serial meeting, also known as a walking meeting, occurs when fewer than a form of a governing body. Like the city council engages in a series of small gatherings. Or communications that collectively resolve and a majority of the body taking action. Or teaching, or excuse me, reaching consensus. Even if, a, even if a majority isn't present in any single interaction. This can happen through the chain of communications like emails, texts, or in-person conversations. Uh. It's getting paint there, but you get my drift. So I wanna know with me talking to. I think I possibly talked to you, maybe. I know I talked to you. I talked to Matt individually. Am I in violation? Of a serial meeting?
If we come to a consensus?
Well, I'm, I, I don't know. I don't think so.
So how, how many folks did you talk to?
Well, I didn't talk, I talked to you, I didn't talk to David, I didn't talk to Shelby.
If our conversation was really close to when you had with anyone else. It was just kind of a. Question.
It was me bringing it to you saying, I, I wanna bring it back to the table because I don't, I didn't agree with how the process went. So was I in violation?
I think.
Cause, cause you, you didn't know what a serial meeting was and you did not either, correct?
But when you called me and told me what you were doing, yellow flags were going. I didn't know what it was.
In your office?
Yeah, I was, that's where I took the phone call. And I was like, you know, this, that's when I went to Paul B's office. But you know, that's really an Oregon Government Ethics Committee question.
It is, that's true.
Yeah, like I.
I'm not gonna come down for sure one way or another, because it would be a guess.
That'd be yes.
It would be a guess.
Oh, yes.
I don't wanna guess, Mayor.
Because we didn't collectively make a decision.
From, from the training, from. I don't think, it's through February, I don't think. I mean, I think, I think that you could've, you know, that's the path you take to, to. Have a serial meeting, but there was nothing, I mean, put it back in agenda as a discussion item, discussing it, I mean. There was no, no decision made outside of meeting. So it wasn't like we came back in here and there was no discussion and we all said, we're. You know, doing field application, right? Like that would be, that's, that's what's getting bad. Like, when there's no discussion here around this table and outside of council, we're not, we have no power. You know, we're not together, so I, I don't think. Hey, I'm gonna bring this back on the table.
My opinion is because it came back as a discussion item and the discussions that were had outside the meeting were had inside the meeting. And there was no decision made. But I'm with Tara, when you called and you said, hey, I talked to you and I went. Yellow flag. And so that was my warning of, hey, we can't make any decisions.
And we didn't make any decisions.
Well, we didn't. Because it came back as a, it came back as a discussion.
I didn't persuade Jack or you or Matt that this is what we're gonna do.
You didn't try, you just had a question.
Yeah.
I wonder if this would be cheaper or what, I wonder if this would be better, that's all.
I just felt we didn't take. And for me, I didn't have enough knowledge and we just took the high road, say, well, we're just gonna pay this big ticket item and it's gonna go away.
It's placed a lot of trust in it.
Yes.
So if I'm wrong, slap my head. If you wanna kick me out of council, kick me out of council.
Our, our discussion was meant to be that little uh, cape that they put up six feet from the edge of the roof to warn you, you're getting close. But I think also disclosing it now in the meeting, knowing that there was no action taken on those discussions. It's still an ethics question, but I feel a lot more comfortable now than when we had our discussion.
I mean, I didn't know this had come into effect in twenty twenty-three. That's when it come into effect.
I didn't take, I didn't take a training until twenty twenty-five.
It was a year fifteen years ago. Okay, that, that's all I had.
You remember this, the thing that said the more you know on NBC that?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's going through my head right now. Alright. Moving on. Your turn. With our youth advisory council.
No, I'm just not gonna talk to Joe at a ballgame or Matt at a ballgame, I'm gonna kinda go off by myself. I won't call you.
As a new guy, I might go to any one of you and say, what's going on with this issue? What's its history, whatever, you know? Can't do that. Just go not free to that or whatever.
And it's, so the, the, the purpose of it is, is. Is to not accidentally get to a quorum, is how it was explained. And so what happens is that. You talk to two people and then one of them calls me. Now a quorum of people have discussed the item outside of the meeting. And if we talk about it in a nature that's effectively working towards, he's the one who should be answering this. Essentially working toward the decision that gets made in a meeting. Where it's not on public record as to the basis of the decision. Somebody raised, might have raised their hand if I misunderstood it from my training. Alright, then I'll go on record as that's how I understand it.
We're all into a serial meetings when you get to get any circular practice.
You got cinnamon toast crunch? With chocolate milk? Sorry, your turn.
Summary of the door battery. So we, uh, at the beginning, we had a meeting and. We set a goal of two thousand, one thousand dollars, not knowing and expecting what to get. Uh, because it's been a long time since we've done this at the high school. Uh, with all of the events and everything, uh, we raised a little over four thousand dollars for the Besson family. Uh, we're really happy with the results and we wanna thank the city for their help as well. Um, this end of the school year is coming, so. We were hoping, I was, I thought Jackie was gonna be here, but I was hoping to um, connect with her to be able to create more um. Opportunities for students to be able to get college prepared as well for um. Upc- upcoming seniors and incoming juniors. And also um, just help overall for um, these high school students as well as. Anybody who needs help with like, um, any like questions about college or anything like that, like career. Related questions as well. Um, as. I think that's pretty much it. I also wanted to thank you guys. Um. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. This is just great. Um, it was amazing to be on the council, so yeah.
If, if you ever grow up in Mount Angel and you wanted one of these seats, you're more than welcome to take one.
If you'd be more specific, I wanna see you in this one.
It's, thank you.
It's considerably less fun. I mean. As a follow-up, rolling into my report, something for you. Um. I had a wonderful conversation with the director of the Silver Falls YMCA. And I say that very specifically because it's Silver Falls YMCA, it's not Silverton YMCA. Making it the YMCA for not only Silverton, but Mount Angel. And Scotts Mills. And one of the questions that came up was, is what services could be potentially provi- provided? Outside of simply sports. And so that, and one of the things that I had brought up, which I think piggybacks with what you're discussing, is. Financial literacy, um, job preparedness, you know, mock interviews. Um, I'll say how to tie a tie and make sure your shirt's tucked in, right? And you know. Essentially some of the stuff that if you're not in FBLA, you don't learn in high school. Um, so. Outside of Jackie, that might be another resource to try to figure out some resources, uh. Some potential programming around what you're looking for. The two items that just uh, came to my brain. As uh, our student counselor was speaking. Is uh, reminding staff that we are gonna need to uh, open a recruitment soon for a new director of library services. And hopefully, we're able to overlap them if possible.
We're working on it.
Okay. And um. I know I still need to write a state of the city address, which will happen sometime in twenty twenty-five. And um, we also talked about, and I don't know when this was gonna happen. Having a second budget committee meeting this year. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. So. With that, anything else for the good of the order prior to us entering executive session? Okay.
Do you need to take a break first?
I'm going to.
In that case, uh. We will take a quick recess. Until. Uh, eight forty. Okay, we're going to uh, come back together. The city council will meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero, section two D. To conduct deliberate deliberations with persons designated by governing body to carry on labor negotiation. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend this executive session. All other persons are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not record the meeting. And not report on any matter addressed during this executive session, except to state. The general subject of the executive session as previously announced. No final action or decision may be made in executive session. We are now rejoining. Coming back into the June second, Mount Angel City Council meeting. And with that, we are now adjourned at. And with that, we are now adjourned at. Nine fifty-five.